Today's date is May twenty third, twenty twenty three, six o'clock is what makes you in the right spot. So this is the planning commission meeting. The opportunities for the public to access, participate. I'm sorry, the opportunities for the public to access and participate in a hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the planning commission homepage and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, so which comments from the public will be received. And so I think the first order of business here is to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. So with that, I would like to ask for a roll call for those who are present in person today.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Oh, yes. That's a hard question.
Commissioner Claiborne?
Present.
Commissioner Missile?
Here.
Commissioner Murray will be participating on Zoom tonight, but he is present. Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Bivens?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carizano?
Here.
Alright, is that the role? Okay. And with that, I would like to address my attention to Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Murray, is this a request to participate remotely?
This is indeed a request to participate remotely.
Yep. In general, Commissioner Murray, would you be able to share the reason for your participation remotely in general?
Yes, due to illness.
Alright, and in general, would you mind sharing your location?
Sure, from, from my home in Whitehall.
Alright, fantastic. With that, Commissioner, is there a motion from the floor to grant this request to participate remotely for Commissioner Murray?
So moved.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, here ain't none. Could we call the roll?
Commissioner Claiborne?
Aye.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes.
Commissioner Missile?
Aye.
Commissioner Murray?
Correct, Commissioner Murray would not vote on his own.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
That just seemed weird to me.
Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Bivens?
Aye.
And Commissioner Carizano?
Aye.
Alright, so you are now have your access granted, Commissioner Murray. Um, before we get started, we also want to recognize a new planning commissioner, uh, Mr. Nathan Moore from the Rio District. We've been waiting for you for a long time, so love to turn the floor over to you if you're gonna give a few words about your background, and I want to make sure you feel welcome here, so thank you.
Sure, uh, thank you very much. Um, and yeah, I think Ned, Ned took his time on this appointment and I'm very glad to be here, so thank you all for, uh, for being so welcoming as I got here today. Um, so yeah, I'm Nathan Moore. My day job is I manage WTJU Radio. It's the University of Virginia's community, uh, radio station, as well as our student sister station. Um, for the last three years or so, I've been on the, uh, Albemarle County Service Authority Board, uh, doing water and sewer planning and policy. Um, and I also spent, uh, misspent youth playing SimCity and City Skyline, so, uh, looking forward to, uh, putting that to real world use.
Oh, that's fantastic. And I just want to reiterate, welcome, and we look forward to your current and future contributions to the planning commission. Um, next on the docket is other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. I do have two individuals here who have signed up to speak. Uh, the first is Pablo Miller, uh, believe I'm reading that correctly. Is there Mr. Pablo Miller? Oh, okay. Second on the list is, uh, Mr. Tom Loach. Alright. Wel- welcome, Mr. Loach. I believe there's a, a lighting, lighting fixture in front of you. It will be green and you'll have three minutes, uh, as that time is winding down. It will turn to yellow, and we'll just ask that you make your most pertinent points when you see that yellow, uh, light, and then it'll turn to red, this stops, so thank you.
Good evening, uh, Tom Loach Croze. In a survey done by Albemarle County in twenty twenty, residents of the county-
Speak into the mic, sir, I'm sorry.
In a survey done by Albemarle County in twenty twenty, residents of the county were asked what they thought about the future. Forty-five percent of those who responded stated that they expected the quality of life to decline in the future. So it would seem when it comes to the incoming upcoming Complan Amendment, uh, update, the first question would be, how will this new Complan improve the quality of life of our citizens? What I've observed from the residents of Croze, the answer is a qualified. It may very well do more harm than good. I did an online questionnaire for Croze, and received, uh, received one hundred and sixty-eight responses in three weeks' time. The questions were tailored to the options presented from the AC forty-four website. The Croze responses directly reflected the statement made by Mr. Bivens on the April twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting, where he stated, I, I don't believe there's any stomach for density in our area right now, and I don't believe there's any stomach to increase the, the development areas. So I feel this is an intellectual exercise and nothing is going to result in significant change. I don't know about future change, but Mr. Bivens' statements exactly reflect, exactly mimic the responses of Croze residents, for instance, AC forty-four, option one. Explore opportunities to provide more density in the infill development areas while retaining and enhancing green infrastructure. I do not support AC forty-four was ninety-four point four eight percent. I support AC forty-four was nine point five two percent. This should come as no surprise to you. The county's own, own data shows that since two six, two thousand sixteen, growth has occurred at an average of fifty-eight percent of the affordable density. Quite frankly, the residents of the county aren't buying what you're trying to sell. Want, this is one reason the residents of Croze strongly objected to the twenty twenty-one master plan update, which was shoved down our throats with this new den, middle density category, a category that was never voted on by the planning commission or board of supervisors. Option two, can, option two was to consider and adjust maximum densities recommended in the development area to most, more closely aligned with historic, historic build-out patterns. I support was eighty-five percent. I do not support was eleven point one percent. As they say, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. Not only do the county's residents not want to increase density in a growth area, they prefer the county to maintain a current development pattern. This includes, does not include middle density zoning. I believe the residents of the county do not want to see Albemarle as new Fairfax. Draft new criteria, option three, draft new criteria that would identify when and where and how the development areas would be expanded. I do not support this ninety percent. I support four point nine percent, have no opinion, five percent. In nineteen ninety-one, Executive Robert Tucker presented a paper that dealt with land use policy. In the paper, Mr. Tucker outlined the politic, policy explicitly stating for the reason of the program and who pays for it.
Sir, I'll just ask if, I'm not sure how much more you have, but I'll, I'll give you about ten additional seconds.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The, the current land use program for preserving rural lands has the objective for the county for two decades, that, and the benefits derived from the program is significant. Who pays for it? As Mr. Tucker said, the cost of land use is not a hidden fact, since it is implicit in the concept of land use taxation, that the burden is shifted to other taxpayers. I think what I'm saying basically to finish up there is that I think if county wants to use land as preservation, I would support it. But if and only it's used profess, 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 preservation, excuse me, but if it's gonna be used as a land, a bank, the future development, then I no longer want to pay for my extra land use, which comes to over four hundred dollars a year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for, for the comment that will be made part of the record. Um, is there a Mr. Miller here? Alright, come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Sir, you'll have, uh, three minutes. You have the light fixture in front of you will be green, and it gets to about one minute, it'll turn yellow, which means just to wrap up your most important points that you have, and red means stop. Thank you, sir.
Can I, I'll go and start? Okay, so, um-
I'm sorry, can you say your name and where you're from?
Oh, beg your pardon?
Oh, you're naming where you're from.
Pablo Miller Croze. Um, so, uh, I got this written statement. Over a lengthy period of time, citizens and business owners of Croze held many often challenging meetings to establish a long-term plan with Albemarle County that would sustain and share the natural beauty and unique culture that attracts so many visitors to western Albemarle County. The resulting Croze Master Plan of two thousand and four was a broad and responsible view of the future that has resulted in the precious gem that is Croze to you, uh, today, and I thank you all for that, Croze. It's just fabulous.
Excuse me, sir? Can you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, uh, less than eight years later, we were informed that this plan would be, uh, that, which we negotiated in good faith with Albemarle County, uh, was gonna be revised. So, and, and there are many great improvements, uh, to this new twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one Croze Master Plan. Uh, there is a part that troubles, uh, a growing number of us, and that is that, um, the section called future land use typologies. And this provides for up to future triple zoning of the existing, of the existing zoning. And, um, uh, and, uh, we, I understand, we understand that in order to preserve its excellent credit ratings and repair and complete the infrastructure already necessitated by the expanded cop population of the Whitehall District, the county has recently and understandably been forced to significantly increase real estate assessments on our community's hard-earned property. These dramatically increased assessments have already created a difficult real estate tax burden on the families of Croze who, like the rest of America, are still recovering from the financial setbacks of COVID. Oh, shoot, uh, future increases in this would impose further burdens on those families, well as in, well as and including those long-established families whose property preserves the beauty of Albemarle County but does not qualify for the tax relief avenues accorded by the state of Virginia. Oh, my gosh. Uh, uh, let me get down to the bottom line. Um, oh, golly. So, I'm just gonna go right to the bottom line. There is a rapidly growing movement to insist on further negotiation to formally delineate in some kind of a binding contract with the county the exact circumstances that would justify further density zoning in Croze beyond the integration of further, further affordable housing. Uh, and this, and, and I'll just throw in that, that the increased assessments have thrown a, a big burden on people who have no intention of selling and their, their homes have been in their families for years. Thank you.
Thank you, and so you can email that as well if you didn't get-
I did, sir.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, with that, we'll move on to the next item on the docket, which is approval of the consent agenda. Uh, in your packet, you should have two documents. One is, uh, the approval of the draft minutes from April twenty-fifth work session and April twenty-fifth regular meeting. The second document is, uh, SE twenty twenty-three zero 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 eight, Penn Park Lane Sidewalk and Planning Strip. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, here ain't none. Uh, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Claiborne?
Aye.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes.
Commissioner Missile?
Aye.
Commissioner Murray?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Bivens?
Aye.
Commissioner Carizano?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. The motion passes. Alright, and so for the main event, we have a presentation on the Equity and Climate Action Tool. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Gabe Daly, Facilities and Environmental Department, and Mr. Jesse Brookins from the County Executive Office.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we are going to get started, uh, with introducing our Equity and Climate Action lens. I'm Jesse Brookins with the Office of Conclusion here with Gabe Daly. Um, this lens and this tool was really an introductory, um, to the opera, um, the Albemarle County Comprehensive Plan, um, how we're going to utilize this lens to work and operate, um, with the objectives, with the policies and strategies overall. Um, we wanted to provide an introductory of the lens and its inception, um, starting with why this tool. Uh, so understanding the purpose of, uh, Equity and Climate Action, it ties back to our county mission overall, uh, to enhance the well-being and the quality of life of all community members to the provision of the highest level of public service consistent with the prudent use of public funds. In fulfilling this mission, we need to have, um, a level of accounting for how equitable our service is, including what is working and what isn't working for our community members. And in addition to that, um, having that consideration for climate change and how it exasperate many existing challenges faced by our community and how responding effectively to climate change can benefit the community overall. In understanding this mission and how equity and climate action ties to a mission, uh, the Board of Supervisors leadership has gone through many resolutions and comments with staff and emphasizing the need and the importance of integrating equity and climate change and climate action within our operations overall and collectively, and as a, uh, being proactive, particularly with our Community Development Office, and particularly with the Compli- Comprehensive Plan, um, staff, they updated and requested our assistance in integrating these efforts uh, into their approach and perspectives within the document overall. With that being said, we look at the purpose of the tool. So the purpose of the tool for Equity and Climate Action lens is to reveal information that can create opportunities to benefit our community by incorporating the perspectives of equity and climate action in our work now. Uh, we will be setting ourselves up for a resilient, equitable, thriving community in the coming decades. Uh, this tool will aid us in examining proposed policies, programs, or projects with respect to climate change and equity impact. But to get started, uh, I think it's important for us to lay the foundation of understanding what we mean by equity, uh, defining it and the core concepts by which we approach it. So from the Office of Conclusion, the way in which we defined our mission of equity is as follows. Equity is, the term equity describes the continuous process of action, reflection, and analysis of what is fair and just for all. This term is distinguished from equality, whereas equality means providing the same to all. Equity is a process that begins by acknowledging an unequal starting place and continues to correct and address the imbalance. So when we address equity, we have to look at the context behind it, the context behind the needs of the community, but also the history in which things have developed, uh, so that we can incorporate that in our mission collectively. But in addition to understanding the mission, just like our county mission, we have core values and ways in which we approach and actualize equity. So that's where we will go into our four concepts and four aspects of equity. The first one being recognition of equity. So recognition of equity seeks to quantify, uh, measure existing disparities in quality of life, health, education, economic opportunity, political participation, and access of resources and services, as well as the historical and present causes and conditions and such disparities. The second concept and second aspect is this distributional ex, equity. So looking at the resources that we have available through our service as a community and being a public service, how can we maximize the access, right, of our program benefits for all members of the community, especially those most in need, uh, minimizing cost burdens of disadvantaged community members? Next, we look at procedural equity. Um, how do we get everyone engaged, right? So how do we seek to ensure meaningful involvement and community engagement in the processes by members of historically underrepresented or excluded groups? And then lastly, we look at structural, which is really looking at how we can maintain this for longevity, right, to rectify policies, uh, institutional practices that exclude some groups from participation in the political processes or that systemically contribute to maintaining disparities in quality of life. But we're looking at embedding that both within our procedural aspect, but making sure that there's intention with it, uh, for the course of long-range planning.
Alright, we'll transition for a minute. I'll speak a little bit about some of the concepts with respect to climate action and environmental stewardship in the lens. Um, and then we'll get into the details of kind of how this tool works and, and how we hope to apply it to the Comprehensive Plan Update. So, uh, just a few definitions of terms, which many of you may already be familiar with, um, but I didn't want to assume. So, climate change, uh, refers to drastic shifts to global weather patterns, including increasingly extreme weather events, um, due to average warming over time of the Earth's surface temperature, and then climate act, excuse me. Climate action has kind of two mainstreams to it, two main aspects. One is the technical term that's used is mitigation. Um, and that really refers to reducing the severity of climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, and then the other sort of subset are adaptation and resilience, and simply that refers to preparing our community for the changes that are, uh, now unavoidable and that we're already starting to experience in the way of increasingly long intense heat waves, uh, rainfall flooding events, things of the like. And so, you know, local, uh, of course, climate action can happen at various levels, international, national state. Um, there's also an important place for local climate action that certainly fits in with the Comprehensive Plan Update and other, uh, projects that we have. Um, how we work with our own community here can have a big impact, um, in the positive direction with respect to that. The lens also includes a couple of questions that relate to other aspects of environmental stewardship. We know that clean water, um, has been a priority for the county for decades in terms of policymaking. Um, and that preserving and promoting biodiversity is an increasingly important area of work that, uh, the Board of Supervisors has emphasized and that uh, staff in the organization work on with a lot of community partners. So we've also into, although it's called the Equity and Climate Action lens, um, based on those of us who worked on it, uh, we've also made an effort to incorporate a couple of additional elements of environmental stewardship, um, into the tool.
So looking at this visual overall, this tool, as we said, is used to aid and examine the policies, um, and the strategies within the Comprehensive Plan. Um, our intent is also to utilize it for very large initiatives, uh, when we consider equity and its impacts, uh, of climate action as well. This is all in alignment with the, uh, second goal of our strategic plan, to build a more resilient, equitable, and engaged community. So when we look at both the correlation between equity and climate action, we think of, uh, access with equity. How can we provide access and resources to the needs of the community that benefit and uplift the community? But in addition to understanding the resources that are available to us, the most foundational resource that we have is viable land. Right? So if we do not have a way to connect and restore and maintain the land in which we exist in, the resources will be impacted and very limited. So as you see, uh, kind of in this, a structure moving upwards, we look at, uh, these following questions as in respect to the procedural equity, distributional equity, structural equity. When we look at it as resilience to climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, health and biodiversity. So these lists of questions are really to aid us in, uh, scoring, right, and getting us perspective and insight within the strategies that we have in place for a long-range plan for the Albemarle Comprehensive Plan.
I'll hang on this slide for a moment before advancing and, and just say that, um, part of how we're, what you'll notice in the bottom says a question, do policies, programs, and projects align with climate action or equity? Um, and as Jesse mentioned at the beginning, uh, we worked on this tool, we created it. Um, it came out of the work of Community Development Department on the Complan Update. Um, so that was kind of the impetus for working on the tool, why we were brought into the project. Um, but we suspect that there's relevance that this tool could be used for other programming or projects that local government, uh, engages in. And so we know that in the context of the Complan, that's a high-level, you know, policy document. Um, but the reason for that language there is that we can see this as being useful for other, uh, work that the organization does. So let's get into a little bit of how the tool works itself, um, and then we'll share a couple of next steps and open it to you all for your questions and, and feedback. So, the tool asks several questions in alignment with the, uh, the visual that you saw on the previous slide. Um, that'll help us identify the extent to which an initiative makes a meaningful contribution to equity and climate action in the county. Um, the tool contains three preliminary questions and seven main questions. So the three preliminary ones are kind of, you could say, a gut check on an idea, uh, some sort of initiative, whether it's, uh, an objective within the Complan or new program that the county wants to create, um, new service to provide. And so these questions basically ask, you know, have we done our homework, uh, as staff? Um, and if we're working in partnership with community members, has, has the project team done its homework to look at what's being proposed? Um, so the first one just asks, you know, is there an awareness of pre-existing disparities, um, and potential climate impacts, uh, in the community that intersect with that issue? Uh, or the topic that, that's being addressed? And then the second two questions, uh, are kind of, uh, a pause point of just saying, hey, is there any compelling reason or evidence that the idea that we have, the initiative, uh, that we're working on would set back efforts to achieve a more equitable community or to advance climate action and other environmental stewardship goals? So just to make sure, you know, of course, the work that we're doing, um, everyone's bringing good intentions to it, uh, and so we don't anticipate that there would be a lot of yeses to these questions, but we felt like it would be a useful check just to say, hey, you know, did someone create a brilliant idea for an objective or a new initiative? Um, but maybe, you know, didn't think about something, and so this is a way to check on that. Assuming that the answer is yes for the first one and no for the second two, then we'd move more into the meat of the tool. And that's this set of questions. Um, and they all kind of start with the same preamble, to what extent does the initiative being considered? Uh, and you'll notice that the first four questions align with the four dimensions of equity that Jesse defined earlier. So, meaningful involvement connected to procedural equity, uh, access to benefits, distribution of costs, those, uh, both having to do with distributional equity, um, looking at structures, uh, that can create disparities, the structural, and then actually the recognitional one was on the previous slide about, um, awareness of potential, uh, potential impacts. And the last three are related to the three elements that I've shared with respect to climate action and, uh, local environmental stewardship. So for the main questions, um, the work of actually applying the tool would be to evaluate the proposal at hand, the initiative, the policy idea, um, and consider what effect might it have? Um, and so, the idea is to come to a score that one might assign, but really the place to start would be thinking qualitatively about, you know, what's the likely impact of, uh, of the initiative on this aspect of equity or, uh, or climate action? And then, you know, we don't want this to be an exercise in offering just like kind of our opinions off the top of our head. And so number two here is to provide a reason to support the score that's assigned, citing research or data, uh, as evidence whenever possible. So that that way, it's not like, you know, well, Gabe thinks it should be a three or should be a two, uh, but that there's some evidence to support that. And we also don't want this to be, uh, you know, critique for the sake of critique. We want this to help improve the work that we all do, uh, in local government and in the community. And so the third one would be if the score is less than three, uh, providing some recommendation or idea for how improvement could be made, um, to help, you know, uh, advance the work. So, the scoring rubric of one, two, three, um, and this is where one could start, you know, before identifying a score, thinking about it in a qualitative sense, evaluating it. Um, you know, does the initiative, uh, sort of have a status quo aspect with respect to the dimension of equity and climate action? Is there maybe some incidental impact, um, or is there more of a meaningful impact? So happy to get into, to any of this with all of you, um, after the next couple of slides. One, uh, one point that I'll make with respect to this is that we know that not necessarily every initiative is going to always be three for all of the dimensions of equity and climate action. So that's not the intention of the tool, is to say, well, everything has to score a three and otherwise, uh, you know, Jesse and Gabe are gonna raise an issue about it, but more of the idea is to think, uh, think holistically, think about how our work can be advancing these major goals of the Board of Supervisors, priorities of the county, um, and also be transparent if there's other priorities that we have, an initiative that needs to happen or will benefit the community in some other way, at least acknowledging, you know, here's where it scored in terms of this tool, um, and then someone makes a decision, you know, to, to proceed or not, perhaps for other reasons. I think this one's actually over to you.
So again, um, okay, so again, as a reiteration, understanding the importance of evaluating these objectives and strategy, as you saw with the scoring rubric, it's really to set intention and strategy within the plans itself. Uh, particularly when you looked at two and you saw incidental impact, it's important to acknowledge that, uh, some larger initiatives may have a positive impact by default or by consequence, right? But that does not necessarily mean that it was a part of the strategy and a part of the intention. So when we, uh, conduct and when we draft these policies, we need to make sure that it is concise and precise with its language and, uh, how we approach equity and consideration with climate action. So that's really when we look at, uh, how the tool is organized with a series of questions to really get into the details, to get into the understanding of the long-range impact, like we said, the combination of qualitative and quantitative, uh, research that may push forward and advance, uh, these objectives and strategies. Um, but overall, how we will use this, uh, with staff, right? So conducting, you know, these research and conducting, uh, these evaluations with, uh, our office, the Office of Conclusion, as well as with climate staff and particular expert, uh, uh, individuals within their offices for, for those particular chapters and for those particular goals and objectives. Um, overall, the outcome is to revise, right, and improve upon these proposed policies and options. Uh, but furthermore, uh, beyond the Alpiments, Albemarle Comprehensive Plan, it's really to embed this and integrate it and oper- operationalize it within our initiatives as a collective county, uh, in service to the public. As for next steps, uh, as we move and, and continue to advance in, uh, phase two, uh, we're looking to apply this, uh, to the objectives and strategies uh, for the new Comprehensive Plan. In addition to that, we are working with and, and strategizing with the Performance and Strategic Office uh, for planning, uh, for leadership training, uh, for people to utilize this and implement this within their- for planning, for leadership training, for people to utilize this and implement this within their their offices as well.
So we're really interested in your questions, feedback, thoughts. We did see an email from Commissioner Murray with a couple of observations and comments. So happy to, we talked a little bit about those and happy to say something now if you'd like, or we can kind of just see what arises in the discussion and circle back, but defer to you in terms of how you'd like to explore this further.
Sure. Absolutely. First, thanks for the presentation. I think in my mind, I was thinking that we could probably just all collectively contribute, kind of go around the horn and share some feedback and open up for dialogue. And it can be a dialogue of questions, answers and comments as we do that, that works for you. So, yeah, great. All right. So I'll start with Commissioner Bivins.
Thank you, Chair. So so let's go back, so take a macro look at this. So I understand these are tools that are going to be used for the comp plan. And so are we speaking at, when you spoke to being used for policy setting, would that be the comp plan and the revision of ordinances, or is it only simply in the in the development of the comp plan?
Particularly right now, we're looking at the focus of the comprehensive plan with the objectives and strategies and within.
But certainly, as we were to go through, when you're working with the performance, with the Office of Performances, the strategic planning, which I know one of my colleagues will speak to that because, Chair, it would be nice if we could hear from that group at some, it would be great if we could hear from that that person, that group. Because as you remember, that's one of the things that many of us have said, when you do this, how are we going to know that we did something good, bad or indifferent?
That's right.
So so what what I'm struggling with, to sort of be honest here, is I absolutely, from a macro level, I I am fully on board with what you're doing here. But a lot of what I, where I am, where I sit right now, sort of the practicality of this. So this feels like a really, as I said before, and something else, it sounds like a fantastic sort of PhD sort of seminar that you're putting, that you're putting together, sort of what's the decision matrix on either, on 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 what the comp plan should do and what what we would expect the results of the comp plan to be. But what I haven't seen, and perhaps at some point you'll be able to point out with with some examples, how we would actually get to that score three position and what would that look like? What would the real impact of going through a score three and saying it's either a one and a half, two, or it's a three? And how would that sort of live out and be fulfilled in the development of the comp plan? Because from what you've shared with us tonight is, I feel as if there is a a a solid approach to intellectually considering what the comp plan is doing, but I have no idea what the practical approach or what the practical, the practical implication of this all. When I go back to Gabe, what you gave us when during during the lockdown period. Lockdown period. All recall, that was a time long ago when we were all locked down, period. You gave us a a slide that had the greenhouse gas emissions on that. And so the fifty-two percent of that was from automobiles, thirty-nine percent of us from buildings. Okay, so if we're going to approach this in an equitable way, how are we going to change this? Because the comp plan is going to have a bunch of things in it about transportation, which I'll remind us, we don't own the transportation network. It's going to say a bunch of things about where we can develop, we're not even developing, developing the type of density in this community that would allow us to have some of the things that would mitigate some of those two issues right there. And so I'm trying to understand how, what's the big lift from this other than it's the appropriate thing to have, but I'm not quite sure that it's going to be effective. And if I could chair for just a little bit more, when we talk about the equity piece of it, and I would advise, I would, I would, I would encourage everyone on the commission to go and look at the Alice Report. It's a bunch of data that's that's collected across the United States. And just just give you a little bit, Alice is the acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Okay, and you 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 will remember that a number of times I say, I'm not talking about supported households, I'm talking about people who work and they can't afford to live here. And the reason I say that is because this is about households that earn more than the federal poverty level, but less than the basic cost of living in the county. And all the, although the data is from twenty twenty-one, at that time, thirty-two percent of Albemarle County households were working or poor, but still could not afford to live here. So they were, and Commissioner Firehawk has talked about that that whole, that whole situation and what she's observed. And so again, I'm saying, if we're talking about a comp plan that in some way is going to sort of mitigate thirty-two percent of the Albemarle House, uh households based on twenty twenty-one data, so that this is a place that they're going to be able to call home easily, without being financially burdened to such a degree, then I want to know how we're going to do that. Otherwise, all we're doing is doing a wonderful prefix for the comp plan, saying, these are the issues and this is the passion by which we're bringing to it. Well, I don't see how it's gonna, I don't see how that's going to solve what needs to be a real and present problem with us for us and for me to, so.
All right, thank you. You want to respond before we move on or?
I don't need one.
You can also digest it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you could come back at another time.
Yeah.
You know, let's talk about that. So don't, I mean, I'm giving, I just, I just threw a lot of stuff on you.
Yeah, no, definitely, definitely a lot of information. And I appreciate, you know, that context. And I think that's where it kind of goes back to that point of, you know, our original definition of the mission of equity, understanding that it is a continuous process and you have to have a start. So in the introduction, it's how do we set intention with our work through the lens and by which we look and view these issues and start to cultivate and develop a strategy behind it? I think the next step would be the assessment of the impact, right? An equity impact assessment in which we evaluate the progress by which these strategies have been implemented and achieved, whether we are on the right track, as you said, or off the right track. But I do believe you you raised some really incredible points and perspectives.
And not to put you on the spot, was if you had something burning that you wanted to say, like, yes, I have something, wanted to make sure you had the space to do that. So.
Chair, could I offer one clarifying point and then more, I think I'll digest as other folks chime in. So one clarifying point, perhaps we didn't mention for one aspect of what you raised, Mr. Bivins, is that the, so where exactly we're looking to apply this is at the level of objectives. So looking at the, assuming that there will be a similar kind of hierarchical structure. I know there's quite a bit of changes to the comp plan update, but that the basic hierarchical structure, goals, objectives and strategies carries forward. This is really designed to look at an objective with the strategies that are contained in that objective. And so to kind of go through each of those and then take a quick look, you know, across the objectives within a particular chapter.
Uh, Commissioner Kurzawa.
I'm sure we all have a lot to say, but it's hard to follow. Yes. Some degree, no, I mean, that is the essence of, I mean, I'm sure there's specifics that we all have that may vary, but I do think that's the essence of of the conversation here, right? It's a overarching policies and all that, you're not going to find a lot of disagreement. But when you get into the detail of how do you actually implement it and see results and the results that you're looking for? You know, it's, I don't see it there, right? So it's, I know there's still a lot of work that you need to do with staff and you say that and one of you work with the staff in each of the sections and need, you know, and you bring in experts from those sections to to draft the language or the policy. And maybe the devil's in that detail there, right? But so it's, it's hard to actually see how you get to those to those outcomes that you're that you're looking for, right? And I, and I, I'm not going to say it as well as, and as eloquently as, as my colleague here, but I do think that's the overall arching question that I have. I'm not going to speak for everybody, obviously, Mr. Bivins has, is how do we get beyond the 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 overarching narrative that, you know, obviously been ongoing for a while. So how do we get beyond it and actually? And and we say this a lot and to not just with climate action and equity, but other housing policies. How do we build, build in those actionable or I should say measurable factors, right? So how do we know that something is doing what it was supposed to do? Regardless of what it is. So how do you build in those measurable, measurables? And so I I would encourage you to think about that and say, this is how we're, not only this is what we're looking for, but this is how we're going to measure it. And I think you you do talk a little bit about that, but I don't see enough of that, right? So how are you actually going to measure an outcome? I I think that would be an important part of it. Other than that, I think you said everything I would.
All right, Commissioner Firehawk.
Okay, well, I just have like three things to say. I'm trying not to talk all night long. I I will say just for your, just sort of as a piece of information, I I work on these issues in my day job, maybe even giving a talk on equity and climate change tomorrow. But I am glad, that was a sort of philosophical thing, I'm really glad that our county is not shying away from the word equity as we're seeing at the governor's level, as well as some of the other localities in Virginia that we're not going to hide under a rock and pretend that everything was always equal. So Bravo to the county for really working on this. My two comments are really on first specificity and second on conflict. So the part of the challenge of our last comprehensive plan was that it was everybody's comprehensive plan and says that it was like the kitchen sink of comprehensive plans. There's everyone got something in there and and that's great. But we, it was so far beyond what the county could actually pull off. So it, you know, it left a lot of people like with hurt feelings or wondering where we're going. And so we've all talked about having much more specificity in this comprehensive plan. And so with that, I'm hoping that there will be a way for you to measure whether something was done, because if you tried to apply this rubric to our past comprehensive plan, there'd be a lot of it, there's a lot of just lofty statements in there that are not really specific. You you couldn't really tell if they were ever done. And and so that's the problem. So we are going to work on metrics and benchmarking in this one. And so hopefully, maybe you can help suggest some of those types of benchmarks, not just reviewing what the staff do, but even helping them advance the the ball. The the second thing, though, I wanted to ask you really about, and you don't have to answer this now either, you can just chew on it for later, but conflicts. So, you know, it, climate, environment, biodiversity, yay for that, and equity and all this stuff. But sometimes, you know, we have conflicts. So I I don't, I I was thinking of a a site that we agreed would be developed and is being developed. And I don't want to get into the details, but it was a salamander habitat, it was a very rich environment, lots of streams. So from the biodiversity scoring, you would score that really low. Okay, now I know they made a tunnel under the road and some salamanders are using it. I've also been told the tunnel probably fall apart in five years and needs to be rebuilt. But, you know, it 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 made a little nod towards that and tried to not pipe the streams, but still, it's a massive impact. So you would give that a really low score, but then in terms of ability to live near Charlottesville, to live in the growth area, to have more housing, so everyone can live in the area that's most likely, you might have scored that higher. So I think in your rubric, you need to come up with something where you have like, you know, this is great, this is terrible, so is it a zero, you know? How how does that work out? How do you weigh those? I voted to approve that site because in the bigger picture, we're preserving rural land by making it easier to live closer in. But from a biodiversity standpoint, it was terrible. So, I mean, I don't want to be melodramatic here, but I kind of am sometimes. So I'll leave it at that, but I just want more thought maybe to those, those times when you can't, you can't really make that work and and how you're, how you would have those qualifiers in here so that you knew what to do.
Commissioner Missl.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurzawa. You thought you had it hard. I have to follow an expert. So I have a few comments and there's a question mixed in, so if you'll bear with me on that. One is really appreciate this effort. I think it's critically important. I think it's a great step. I think that, you know, overall, having it discussed in this forum and also with the Board of Supervisors is a great step forward for the county. So I'm grateful for that. Here's my question. This sounds really basic. No laughter from the Dais, please. When you say on Slide thirteen, the main questions will reveal whether an initiative, and then you say such as a policy or a project have significant incremental or no meaningful impact on equity or climate action. Define initiative.
I will share, oh, there you go. So I've shared that is the initiative, the reason we utilize that term was because while this is utilized for the comprehensive plan, the larger goal for this lens itself is to be utilized within our projects within county operations on a departmental basis. So this tool in itself is the intention of not only expanding it and utilizing it as a lens throughout the comprehensive plan, but collectively within our operations.
Perfect. Thank you. That's what I thought. And that's got, that's gonna lead to a few more questions. So echoing, and I won't repeat what's already been said, but I'll just echo the importance of metrics and measures. And that didn't come through here, right? There's a lot of a sort of subjective language in here, which is a great starting point. I know you guys are way beyond that and that this is just a presentation of a sort of an overview. But without knowing really where we're headed, right? It's sort of hard to say, here's the lens we're going to use, in my opinion. Because in my mind, a lens is something you can either use to see something closer or more clearly with. And if I'm doing that, I need to know what I'm focusing on. So I'm not quite sure from this discussion yet what we're focusing on, you know, what is that target that we're trying to see more clearly with the lens? So I think defining that would be helpful. I think, you know, I'd be curious to know if you looked at other benchmarks, you use that term in other jurisdictions and how that was being applied across this jurisdiction and whether you had some lessons learned from that, taken takeaways, key takeaways. I think it'd be interesting to to learn that. And then my last point is to your definition of initiative, which is what does this ultimately mean for the county from a land use perspective? And so, you know, does that mean preservation of land? Does that mean more infill development and focus on brownfield development? Does it mean initiatives or incentives for developers to preserve certain areas to increase the open space? That's part of a neighborhood model district zone, right? All those big questions of sort of what does this really mean and how does it impact Albemarle County land use? Would be something that would be helpful to define for me.
Then to come along.
Your mic.
But come along, what you're saying, Fred, then would we expect, as we now do with housing on our SPs, that we might, and I'm not saying we should.
Right.
Please believe, I am not saying we should, that there would be an equity and climate score.
Yes, exactly right.
I think that's where you're going.
That's what I'm wondering.
Right, right, right. That's what I, that's what I'm wondering also.
Yeah.
Because you know how we, we went from only having, we went from having nothing on our on our SP, our our special uses about affordable housing, to now we have this sort of statement that's mine right there about affordable housing on our SPs. Would we expect to see something like?
Yes, that's a great point.
Exactly the parallel that I was drawing. Yeah. And, you know, to add to that, thinking about it from an applicant standpoint, what does it mean for applicants? Does it mean that it adds another layer of benefit, right? Because they now have a new initiative or a new incentive to do things differently. So I think trying to understand what that means as an applicant would be helpful.
Great comments. Commissioner Moore.
Well, again, I think a lot of great things have already been said and I'm fresh on the on the block here. But again, just echoing what others have said, I do really appreciate that equity and climate action lens is, is, you know, first, you feel like front and center in terms of how we're thinking about these things as frameworks, as priorities. And also echoing some others, I think, just in terms of better understanding some of these, I think some examples to to sort of teach and explain probably would 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 help understand, like, if there's a particular project, here's how we might approach this in terms of one, two or three. And why, you know, and I do understand totally the, it was a short presentation and and there's a, some of these would require an awful lot of research. And it feels like some of the things that we may want to try are a little bit unknown, which is is a little difficult to say, this is a one point five or two point five, you kind of argue it, you know, up or down. And I think that's just the way it sometimes goes. We we move forward with incomplete information a lot of times. But but no, again, I think just really applause for putting together a nice wrapper around how we can think about some of these things. And I did notice too that And I did notice too, that that in terms of of uh, uh, consulting with how some other localities have done this, I just saw in the footnotes that uh, Portland and Multoma, but Multnomah County and then also uh, what Department of Interior, there were some some citations there. So cool to look at, uh, I guess how it's, that's been done elsewhere. So.
Very common. So I'll pivot to online to Commissioner Murray.
Yes, um, you have my emailed comments. And um, one of my core questions here relates to distributional equity. A core principle of smart growth is the idea that services will be prioritized for areas where delivery of those services are most cost effective and efficient. And yet, just there seems to be a an implicit conflict there with distributional equity. And I was wondering if you could talk to that. And then also, I just second, uh, kind of Firehawk's comments about conflict and how that's managed. Um, I've seen some projects in the state and I've referenced one of them in my email where there were some be pretty big conflicts between a climate objective and for example, a biodiversity objective. And so understanding how those conflicts would play out is very important.
But he had more. So, oh, okay. I thought he felt like he was gonna say more, but.
No, I.
Sorry, Commissioner Murray?
I, no, that's, that's, that's it. I believe in being concise.
Okay. Um, uh, thank you, sir. Um, I feel like I have the the easy job and you go last. Um, you know, I think I would double down on the metrics, right? And along that same token, I think we have three areas of influence, right? As you step through these broad topics like climate and equity, I've always kind of boiled it down to like as an organization. So from a staff level, what can you do from a metrics standpoint within the staff, those who collect the paycheck? What can you do, right, to help advance this cause towards equity as well as um, climate action? Like we, you have the most agency there. We can control what we do. Uh, I think the next sphere is what I would call the citizens or the community. And I think that we have less influence, but you have enough to be impactful, right? And that's kind of going back to the conversation around what is the the application look like for SUPs, right? How do we start to do that by metrics, right? So we know a baseline and we know we're trying to move the needle. And I would say lastly, um, and I don't want to forget this, and we have the least amount of agency, but you've still got to play there. It's around systems, right? So what is the city or the university doing that might impact your goals, right, towards that? And where there's opportunities to work together or just be aware, situational awareness that some of that activity might impact those climate and equity goals, right? We live right next door to each other. It's not something you can ignore. So I would say from an organizational citizen and then a bigger systems piece, as we start to think about how do we organize those metrics, I think that would be very appropriate a- as you move forward. Also want to think about, or I encourage you to think about as you move through this process, it's long, right? Doing these updates are long. Are there moments where you just pause in that project to ask yourself, where can we better define, better interject, better move forward, climate and equity, right? I call them pause points. Where's it, where's that flow in that natural project progression where just wave the flag, right? A lot of times we just keep going, we're moving fast and sometimes you don't think about it, but where where does pause points at within that process? And then lastly, this is more of a comment. I know you talked about greenhouse gas emissions, but um, carbon emissions as well, uh, which is something that I think you have to pay attention to in the quest to mitigate climate action, right? It's more than this greenhouse gases. What are the materials you're using? And again, going back to where can you have change? Maybe that's a systems thing. You can't tell people to use this kind of concrete, but you can certainly encourage it, right? Um, so those are kind of my comments as we bring it to a close without being repetitive. Any other comments or additional questions you may have thought of as you hear others speak, right? It kind of generates more stuff. So, yes.
Yeah, just a a couple of comments. So um, I think also when you work on these metrics and you and you get to evaluating a project, you have to watch out for those false dichotomies. So one example would be, I've I've worked on a lot of affordable housing issues in my career and sometimes affordable housing providers will say things like, well, we couldn't, you know, put street trees because this is affordable housing. And I always say, well, people who live in affordable housing deserve shade and lower air conditioning bills and a place for their kids to play. So you know, people will kind of play those things off on each other. So there's climate versus you know, access to to housing. Another example would be um, when we, the the state law was changed about a decade ago or more to allow developers to build, to buy offside credits for stormwater. So Albemarle used to be a leader in low impact development, bio swales. We have them on our county property, green roofs. We have them on this building. We're seeing hardly any of that anymore. Uh, and it's because they're they're buying offside credits. So um, from a a climate perspective, I would, I personally would not rate that type of project very highly because they're not treating the water quality impacts that they generated. They're buying a credit from somewhere else. Um, and then, you know, are we good, but they could say, but we're allowed to do that. Now, there's a whole other story about how that slipped through the legislature. It was not, the bill did not go the way it ended up. Um, but but I would, you know, I would like to be like poo poo on that. So, you know, that's not a ranking standard. Honestly, yeah, yeah. But it's, it, there's, there's lots of cases where somebody is doing, you know, exactly what they're allowed to do. Uh, but yet it isn't very green of them. And and I have gotten developers to not pipe streams that they plan to pipe and put permeable paving when they didn't have to do it. So I think we have to give a really hard look at what are these incentives? You know, we can't just say, hey, we're gonna put a pair, extra two paragraphs in our review and say this wasn't very green or it could have, you know, how are we going to word it? But you know, example would be, and I I don't want to give uh, anyone in the audience a heart attack, but um, there are some communities have done things like green lighting, where if you have this many green elements to your proposal, you go through a separate review process where you go faster. And since time is money to development communities, those programs have proven effective. And that you could be a not at all green developer and just want to, you know, and it doesn't mean that you don't do the good review, but but they've done a bunch of extras it to get you guys to say, right, greenness or whatever you're gonna put on there and equitable and whatever. So I I just really wanted us us to be careful about how we're going to develop some kind of ranking system, because people could be playing absolutely by the book and and not be green and not not be equitable and it'd be really hard to hold their feet to the fire on that.
Yeah. So you said something and and so I want to also just ask this question. This is about what we, what we can do with the royal we can do. So as part of also the equity piece about figuring out during the development of the comp plan, how we intentionally go out and bring different voices in for consideration. Because we are really become, we are, there are certain aspects of our community who are really good advocates. They have the education. They have the money. And they have, I was gonna say, and they have the time. And they have the time.
Yeah.
They tend to have, their their observations often feel as if they have a hyper sense uh, sensitive or 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 received in a way that that seems to be not in balance with the rest of the community. And so as part of what you're also talking about, a chance to go out and engage with members of the community. So in fact, as 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 Tori and you are putting together this this process, you know that you've you've received data from a broad spectrum of Albemarle. Are weites or are we Albemarle citizens? Okay, because Albemarle likes, because that's the thing that I have become concerned with in my six years of being on the planning commission. We always hear from people with means. Make whatever bank account you want to put that in. And and in and we also need to hear from people who feel as if they've been perhaps frozen out of the process of it. Now, if I can also stand on a box for a second, I also would hope that what we're hearing from people who have a stake in Albemarle County as opposed to advocates advocates who come here from other places, because they also well organized. And I think sometimes they over organize and our own people don't get a chance to sort of step forward and sort of say what it is, because I don't feel like they're as elegant eloquent or as are or have a command of some of the industry data.
Couldn't agree more. And I think that's a great example of a pause point. And it could be, that's what I mean, right? After you collect some of that data, you look at where it came from, pause. Did we get all the voice, not all the voices, but a great sampling of the voices, right? So that's what I mean by the pause point, so at the project, right? So um, great, great comment. There I see lining up and Commissioner Murray's, pardon my informality. Let's see your hand up, Commissioner Murray.
Yes, I was just gonna also mention, it'd be great to see some some current policies run through this to see how they score. Um, someone today mentioned land use valuation. I'd love to see if that was a new program. We were just thinking about passing today. Well, how would that score? It'd be nice to see some um, some policies that we perceive as being pretty atrocious um, that have been passed in other localities. See how that do they actually, you know, how do they score in that? Some policies that we see we perceive as being good, send those through there. It'd be nice to see like how that plays out. How do, how, what numbers do we get? And then what do we do with that?
Great comment. That is, that would be intriguing as well. And Commissioner?
Yeah, I just had a couple of additional thoughts that everybody's making me, making me think of. Um, one is I was looking back at your presentation and on like page thirteen for summers. There are a number of main questions on there and it starts with saying, to what extent does this initiative and then plays out? And those are all good questions. Um, one thing, a couple of things that struck me is one, we haven't talked about education. Uh, so if you think about the, you know, when you're looking at the, through this lens at the at the comp plan, it's one thing. You're talking to staff, you're talking to people who are kind of somewhat educated. What in in this area, when and you're applying your values and your education to that, right? So you're, that's your takeaway. I would just think it would be beneficial for us to be also thinking about people who like uh, maybe applicants who are not so well versed in the areas of equity and sustainability and climate action and have a component, some component of education. That is, you know, here's what it looks like. So to what extent does this initiative, but also how could this initiative? Dot, 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 right? And and sort of play that out. The second thing is um, the that, you know, we talked about value, we talked about incentives. And I know how challenging it's been for this county and other areas jurisdictions to come up with incentives to promote affordable housing. And so when we talk, talk about incentives to promote equity and climate action, it's also, I think, going to be a little bit of a challenge to get there. So another piece of that educational tool is to help applicants understand the benefit to achieving equity and climate action in a way that illustrates value to them. So in a sense, that's almost an incentive, right? Um, and again, that's part of that education piece. Thanks.
It's certainly been a a rich discussion. You've taken it a lot. Don't feel obligated to have to respond right now, but I do want to give you space if you wanted to share some closing thoughts and if you have any rebuttal questions or not rebuttal, but we're not counter questions for us. So, yeah.
I think first and foremost, thank you all uh, for the feedback that you provided. I think it's extremely uh, beneficial for us to hear your expert knowledge um, that you've shared. Um, I think one thing that you all touched on that's extremely important is the numbers and the data, right? Even going towards recognition of equity, what can we, how can we quantify the reason why people are even submitting these applications? And have they considered, right, how that may impact the disparities, whether it may exacerbate or may it mitigate potentially? Um, I think that's especially important. I know in prior years, we did the equity profile for two thousand twenty one, um, looking at the current existing disparities that exist in well being within the community. Uh, the goal is to continue through my office, particularly to provide an updated awareness um, in those efforts um, and to really collaborate, you know, not only through the county, but like, as you mentioned, on a regional basis of seeing what that well being may look like. So having and gathering information is going to be an extremely important process and providing that uh, recognition of what these issues are. And I think, like you said, once we understand where we are, then we can see, you know, the strategy in place of where we can go. Uh, but I do appreciate that feedback. Um, and then I'll pass it to Gabe if you had any remarks.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, first off, likewise, thank you all so much for the feedback, questions and comments. I think there's, there's quite a bit for us to go back and do some additional work on. And you know, like you noted, this, we we shortened things for the presentation. There's some kind of background that that context that's there as well. Um, but this is really, really good feedback and and we really appreciate it. Um, just a maybe a couple of things to to speak to that have been in our minds as well. And so I think we would be interested too in, you know, if it's appropriate coming back at some point and having another work session when there's some need to look at in terms of, you know, specific policies uh, that we could, that we could look at and and receive some further feedback. And explore that together. So um, just a a couple items kind of from the climate program perspective. Uh, we are really interested in thinking about the Commissioner Firehawk, you mentioned like kind of being careful of false dichotomies. And at the same time, also surfacing real tensions. And where there are real tensions, you know, where those get surfaced, then I think there's part of what we see as the process of using this tool is for staff to, you know, do our best to um, surface those tensions, maybe make a recommendation and then it, you know, and then all the information is there for you and the planning commission, for the board of supervisors to kind of evaluate and make a political decision about, you know, which which way to go. Um, so that's hopefully something we can, we can use here. I think one other element with respect to an example of specific policies, we did do an exercise with staff uh, with a, just like a few um, from the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan where we did a workshop and we had people in small groups scoring and giving reasons. Um, and we, you know, for those, it was kind of a workshop to help us surface things in the tool that maybe weren't working or, you know, how the tool can be, how usable was the tool? Um, and we got good feedback from that. We we felt like it would be a little weird to use those examples from that workshop in the presentation with you, because it was kind of like a test drive of the lens. And then we made some refinements to it. But I think that certainly this could be applied to, you know, certain existing policies to take a look and and see how it shakes out. We also you know, Kevin and Tori have spoken with us about how we can really look to using this with the objectives and strategies of the of the AC forty four comp plan update. And I imagine that that's something then that could be explored, um, explored with you. So the last thing that I was just gonna say is I think for now, you know, we developed this as uh, you know, like, like we said earlier, it came out of the AC forty four update. And so we came at it thinking about this with respect to like county capital C initiatives. Um, so you know, countywide policies, comprehensive plan, perhaps then looking at like, you know, county code updates, like zoning ordinance update. Um, so using it in those contexts, maybe using it for like a program or project, like new, a new service that the county is going to provide to the community. We, we didn't come at it from the angle of using it as a lens to evaluate like specific pro, special use projects for individual developments that come before you, but it, I heard from a number of you that there might be interest in that and in being able to adapt this. I think some more work would need to be done to to do that, but I just want to call out like sort of where we came at it from and also that hearing your interest in a a adaptation of this to be used at kind of different layers of of the work that uh, that the county government does.
Fantastic. Commissioner?
I I just really want to double, triple echo Commissioner Missl's comment on education. Uh, because as we're going to be grading these things or measuring them against these certain rubrics, um, uh, there's a lot of well intentioned people in our community that, you know, might not, just might not know. And 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 like they would score better if only they knew. And, you know, I can think an example like um, some uh, newer developers, newer as in like younger and new to the development world, like, you know, people with cash to invest, but now they're a developer, you know, and um, and we sit up here and say, why aren't you using permeable pavement? And why did you cut down all those mature trees over there? And they're like, oh, what are you talking about? And and I've had some side meetings, not about their particular proposals, but where they come and say, well, what should I be doing? What is a green development? And, and I've had some side meetings, not about their particular proposals, but where they come and say, well, what should I be doing? What is a green development? They, they don't even know. And if you go to your, let's say you hire an engineer and you say, I want to develop this land. I invested this much. I've got to make a return on my investment. And, you know, like save me as much money as possible. So a lot of times those engineers don't even tell them anything about any low-impact development, things they could be doing or how they could, you know, sequester more carbon on their site or something like that, that you might be dreaming of. You know, because they're just trying to get the best for their clients. So we're over and over and, and Lonnie can, Mr. Murray can echo this, you know, he's always asking, what, well, why didn't you try this and that? And the engineer always says, oh yeah, we, we know about all these things, but you know, we're, we're not using them on this site. And that I, I suspect it's because they didn't even have that conversation. So it seems like there would be, I know it would be hard, but there would be some value in asking applicants who are asking for special use permits or rezonings to speak to that. And, and to talk about equity, you know, to, to, to at least have it as a category that they have to answer to, even if we don't like their answer. Perhaps in some case it gets spur change, but again, we need to provide that front-end education on what would one do to make one's development more equitable or more, or project more equitable or more sensitive to the environment.
Yeah, I have a great, I don't know if it's great, but I have a follow-on to this. No, it was, your point was great. I, what came to mind was, and this may be way too basic, but some form of a checklist. Like, you know, think about lead and one nice thing about lead, I mean, it's, I have different opinions about lead itself. But one nice thing is that it gives you a checklist that as an applicant, you can look at and say, yeah, this one may apply. You know, sensitive land protection, high priority site and equitable development, these kinds of things that you can kind of go down the list. And while you're doing that, I find that I'm being educated. And I might see some things on there that are like, ah, I can do that, but I hadn't thought about it. And so now you're checking that box. And then the other nice thing about it from an applicant standpoint is that at the end of the, the sheet, this checklist sheet, you're scoring your, your project. And you see that score and your gold, you know, silver certified, whatever that is. You kind of have your expectations set. So it almost takes a little bit of the hot seat off of the county saying, sorry, you only got a two and a half. I would have known that going into it, had I done my checklist. So I think thinking about a way to go about that, that gives education and structure and accountability, but also insight to what might become a final judgment would be helpful.
And I'll share, as you continue to develop the tool, the American Institute of Architects has great resources on equitable communities. And what does that start to look like as well as climate? And I'm happy to share that I work for them. So I'm happy to point you in the right direction. If there's something just to kind of flip through, it might spark some ideas for you. I see Commissioner Murray's, is that an old hand or a new hand?
That's, that's a new hand.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so what I was gonna say is, I, I really like this idea of a score that we can put on things. And, and actually this came up years and years ago, when I was on the Citizens Committee on Environmental Sustainability. It was a joint city-county committee. And one of the things we talked about, wouldn't it be great if we could put a letter grade on some of these applications? So that if, if something was, you know, if people knew that the public would see that this special use permit was a grade A that it had gone above and beyond, they would take that as a point of pride. And if it was a grade F, regardless of whether it got passed or not, that would be public and people would know that this was a grade F development. And I think there'd be value in that.
Great, great. Thank you, Commissioner Murray.
When, when Fred brought up the, the lead, I hadn't thought about that, but one of the things that, that I don't know how familiar you guys are with, with the US Green Building Council and the lead process for buildings, but this has been going on for decades now. And there is, there's a huge database. So one of the things they can do is they can measure, they can begin to measure and I forget when the first lead came out, but it was probably right around thousand, early, early two thousand, because I remember getting involved with it then in, in, in the University of California system. And so now they have this database where they, they've changed it throughout the years, right? So, so lead is, I forget what we're thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, I forget which, which version we're in, but we're in. You know, there's been multiple leads and now it's expanded. There's lead for healthcare, right? There's lead for existing buildings. There's, there's, you know, lead for commercial. So there's all different kinds of, of sub-leads now. But it, it's a way to measure, we're talking about it. How do you measure? Well, you gotta come up with something to measure, right? You gotta come up with some particulars. Which you've heard here today. So, yeah, I think if, if you can send them some of that information from, the AA has a lot of that. So you could, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to make this up from whole cloth. A lot of this exists already. And it might help you to, how can you actually measure something down the road? Is by providing, and I think the checklist is a great idea, so.
Yeah, so sure. Here's the radical, here's the radical in me. And I'm being mischievous now.
Yeah, say it on the microphone, Julie.
Here, here's the radical in me right now. And I'm being mischievous as I say this, because I'm also thinking about what took place in, 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 in our, our neighboring jurisdiction when they went through this. What I would hope we would think very carefully about is putting an equity or climate action score on any new land use map that we did, that came out, because I would, I would just, I would caution us to be, to be very careful. And how far we, we sort of evolve this matrix, even though there's a part of me that would say, oh yeah, I'd really like to see that. But could you have it two years from now when I'm no longer on the, I'm no longer on the commission, so I can stand out there and sort of, you know, sort of root you on from, from, from the stands. But there is a way in which that, that analysis in a, in a I don't know the right word to, to not be provocative. But in, in an innocent way, but an informed innocent way could be used to describe that process. Because in fact, that's, that is the thing that we do wrestle with in every application, whether or not it's a a zoning map amendment or the TM, you know, whatever the TMA thing is. What is it? The zoning map amendment, there's a T something amendment. ZMA, thank you. There's ZMA, the zoning map amendment, that everything we wrestle with, that we, when we talk about those things is what's the impact on the surrounding communities? If we do this, and so there's going to become something to us, I assume at some point that's going to be, is there going to be a proposition for the, for the land use map to change? And so as you all are wrestling with that somewhere else, that might be, that, that might be an exercise that you sort of put through that and just don't tell me about.
And with that, I, I want to bring us to a close. A lot of rich conversation. I'm, I'm gonna bring us home. First and foremost, thank you. Congratulations in getting it this far, getting off of zero. I hope you see us as a partner. So as your tool develops and matures, we will welcome an opportunity to engage in further dialogue as this continues. So, thank you and feel free to stay with us for the rest of the session, but with that, we're going to move on in the agenda. So thank you again. Alright, commissioners, we're gonna move to committee reports, if any.
Yeah, the, the MPO met last week, this week, last week, I think. Can't remember. Yeah, last week. It wasn't this week, it's only Tuesday. This feels, it's been a long week. And so they met, we went through the, their, their budget and kind of their priorities, but towards the end of it, we reviewed the, the smart scale projects, what's been approved. Some of the scores. And, and there was a lengthy conversation. Just too bad Mr. McDurman was, you know, is no longer there because he would have, I think, enjoyed this one on, on the Ravenna Bridge. So you guys remember the bridge? And I think at one point we had, we, there was a presentation here. The MPO had recommended an alignment that was not the alignment that was chosen. It scored really poorly.
The alignment?
The, the project.
Oh, in the smart scale. Okay, yeah.
So there was some discussion about, right, should, should this alignment be reconsidered? And one of the things that struck me is, we, it actually, we'd never we never voted on. It's not something, I don't know that it had to go to us, but it wasn't something that actually came back to us. We saw a presentation. But I don't believe there was a, you know, any movement for us to, to make a recommendation or an alignment. I think the city same way for their planning commission, they did not. But you, you can maybe, hold my memory, but.
Yeah, that you, you're correct, Commissioner Carzano. That did not come to the planning commission. There was a vote taken at the, at the MPO technical committee. Also, there was a public poll that was put out, results were shared. And then the final decision was made by the MPO policy board, which of course we do have two of our two of our board member, board of supervisors are members of.
And, and that differed from the MPO had recommended. And I'm just wondering if they're, you know, given the score, I don't, don't think it's going to score any higher. And it is an important project. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be unfortunate to, to lose that project because of what might be a poor alignment. And perhaps if there's some and, and actually in the MPO we're talking about, perhaps there is a, a joint meeting of planning commissions and city and, and the county and maybe some supervisors to, to talk about the benefits of other alignments and how it could potentially score higher because there's a price difference. So anyway, it, it was, it was a lengthy conversation. I think it was a good conversation, but alright, thank you for that report. Any other reports? Yeah, Commissioner Firehawk.
Well, the Historic Preservation Committee continues on its role of actually meeting. We did it again yesterday. For your benefit, they didn't meet for like six months last year because we couldn't have a quorum. Anyway, I'll get off the old soapbox. So yeah, we, we didn't have a, a huge agenda, but we talked about, we had to kind of bring back a process that had been started a year before and then got lost in the not meeting time. Which was the process for recommending new historic markers. There had been a, a process put in place with a special emphasis on communities that had been not recognized in the past or, you know, events, people, places that had not received attention. And so several markers were designed and installed. And then the thought was to have a process where the public can recommend that they would like a Alamo Marl County markers. This is different than the state's black and white markers that one our county decides to do. And I think the cost for the, to actually for the doing of them is pretty low, something like fifteen hundred dollars. So maybe, I don't know what else it costs to actually install them. But anyway, apparently more than a year ago, the committee had gotten pretty far along in a, a process for how to nominate them. So they're re-upping that. They're gonna finish that. And they're also in the process of figuring out with staff how much funding is available. There is funding left somewhere in the kitty, in the big morass of the county's budget. Somewhere in there is a little bucket for historic markers. And, you know, we can, we can also think about, you know, if we are going to get more, how to get them. But the other thing is that they're going to work on criteria for how you would rank applications, like to your, to some of your points earlier about who speaks up, you know, like would all the stark historic markers go to one corner of the county where everyone got excited and sent ten requests? And none to the southern part where no one knew about it and so on, so forth. So they're gonna think about educating people, helping them apply all that. So I, I think it could be a really cool, robust program and a great way to highlight our history and preserving it for the future. The second thing that we talked about was also, it's again under the bucket of education. Having an awards program. So I think sometimes it feels like the Strong Preservation Committee's job is to lament the loss of another structure or place. And, and, and we document what was so great that's now being torn down. So it's kind of depressing. And so the, and, and there are some success stories though, and but often those don't get the attention. So the idea is to have an awards program for somebody that did a particularly fine job of renovating their property. But we also wanted the program to not just be like the big fancy plantation house that the billionaire restored, you know, because they could. We want it like the common person's, like little cottage that had significance or, so we're gonna come up with some different categories for awards. And there, and there may even be, you know, it's like, you know, commercial, residential, large-scale, small-scale. And possibly also one for land, historic landscapes, as a people who bring back a landscape. So anyway, we're gonna work on those two things, bringing that back forward, and I'm excited to see what we develop.
Excellent packed agenda after missing six months. Commissioner Murray?
Yes, the crazy CDC met and we had a great presentation by the Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority. It was, it's interesting to see all the projects that they've, that are underway, all the things, you know. You know, detailed discussion of like how our sewage gets treated, how water gets where it's going, how water gets treated. It's, it's actually quite fascinating to see how all that comes into play. It's also very interesting to see how they can do these large infrastructure projects, but because they have the ability to have these for their service that it's all paid for in a way that things like schools and other kind of infrastructure are not. This is very, is very fascinating. And then also there's a significant number of people still concerned about the oak bluff proposal. And some of the comments are made about that. And then also some private discussions about the role of the CACs, are they, are they merely to sort of provoke discussion? And bring information to the public or should they take a position on, on matters? And so
Alright, thank you for the report. Any questions from any of the information that you've heard thus far?
Yeah, but one, a small, but I know it's not actually part of this committee of this body, but having been on the ACSA, just to let you know, the water and sewer rates are going up this year. And maybe apropos to this group is that for the first time since, I think, two thousand seven, the connection charges are going to go up for new developments. Yeah, tappies. So not by a crazy amount, but the retailers, ACSA and then the city water as well, are facing some really steep hikes from RWSA. And so expect your rates to be higher, but also the intersection, you might hear about that from some proposed developers.
Thank you for sharing that. Alright, next on the docket, I'll move to Mr. McDermott, review of the board of supervisors meeting, May seventeen.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. And actually, there were two meetings. The, the first one wasn't listed here since the last time the, the planning commission met. The first one was on May third. And that was, there were a couple of items of interest on that, that had previously come before the planning commission. The first one being the city church special use permit amendment. This is the one out there on Rio Road, very close to Belvidere, if you remember that coming in, and they are putting in additional structure in the back, that SP was approved six oh. And everyone was very supportive of that. The other one that came before them on the third was the rezoning for nine 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 Rio, that would remove the commercial component of that or the requirement for the commercial component of that development, also right there at the corner of Belvidere and Rio. Once again, that was approved six oh by the Board of Commissioners. It was pointed out that both those projects were directly across the street and there are transportation issues that have gone on. And we do, we do have a a smart scale grant that was approved this year to reconfigure that intersection and improve those operations and safety. So just something that was noted during those discussions. The other meeting on the seventeenth included one item that had been before the planning commission. The Riverside Village rezoning, similar to nine 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 Rio, in which they were trying to remove the commercial component. There were some changes since the planning commission heard that, that, that presentation or that item. Since when they came to us, they were essentially removing almost all of the the commercial except for the space that currently contains that grit between the planning commission and the board of supervisors. They did actually find between the planning commission and the board of supervisors. They did actually find a tenant for the restaurant portion of that. And then so
Eat there in appreciation.
Yeah, so.
Get a discount.
So that was now, they did then add that commercial back into the required commercial. However, they were still trying to remove, there was still a couple more spaces between those two restaurants that were unutilized. And the board of supervisors did approve that five to one. So so the the thing went forward with more commercial space than what you saw, but but they are removing some.
Mr. McDermott, they could, but that developer or that owner could still put commercial, right? They just said that they're they've reduced what they have to put.
Absolutely. Yes, the the rezoning, the code of development for the rezoning was changed so that the minimum commercial is is no longer what it was before to to include all those buildings. So the the structures are already built. They've had offices in them. I'm not sure. It sounded like they weren't anticipating immediately putting residential in there. And they still continue to try and find tenants for it, but but they don't have to for those other two structures. And the other item that was on the plan, on the board of supervisors' agenda, that may seventeenth is the secondary six-year plan, which I know has had interest from the planning commission because this is the the Department of Transportation's plan, which includes funding for paving unpaved roads. And it was approved at at the public hearing on the seventeenth. And there's there are a host of new roads that were requested for paving. We are working through the board process to get that done right now. But the conversation was was pretty deep as far as how we should be considering those those the future requests for those, the unpaving unpaved roads. So that covers those two items unless you have any questions for me.
Very comprehensive update. Thank you. Any questions? All right. We do have some new business to take care of here. You'll see two components to it. One is the planning commission schedule, which we did take action on back in January, but I'll ask Mr. McDermott to provide the the clarifications, if you will, on what is being proposed, and then we'll take action on a resolution to to solidify that revised schedule. So.
Yeah, thank you. I think these would be two separate actions that we're looking for, although very related. And and they kind of are coming to you because because of their relationship. The the first one is a revised planning commission schedule for the rest of this year. And the reason we are bringing this in addition to what's going to come next with this resolution is that you've noticed that we've had some cancellations of meetings and part of the reason for that is some of the restrictions that we approved in the initial planning commission agenda, where we could only have work sessions on those very specific dates and times. So the first, or I'm sorry, the second meeting of every month at four o'clock, we could have a work session. Well, what was happening is we were getting requests for multiple work sessions on those days or requests for work sessions on the first agenda of the month. So what I'm trying to do here is to revise the schedule so that it's not specified that work sessions have to happen on any particular meeting or at any particular time. I think our our preference is that if there is one item for a planning commission meeting and it is a work session, that we can hold that in at six o'clock in this room, normal like we would a normal meeting, if there was some reason why that particular planning commission or that particular work session would be better served in two forty-one, sitting around a table. We can always make that change, but I didn't want to define that straight out from the from the meeting schedule that we post online for the public. So what this new meeting schedule does is just remove those details and says, these are the days that we are going to be meeting, and it is still the second and fourth Tuesday of every month for the rest of the year. And then it says they're typically held at six o'clock, and we'll have language on the planning commission website that talks about where and when these are met, these planning commission meetings happen. And if there's ever a change, we would announce that well in advance to give the appropriate appropriate acknowledgement to the public. So I if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. And once we're done with that, I would guess I would appreciate a vote on that new revised schedule.
Yeah, just a brief clarification. So the the if we have a work session, they're they're not limited to just like four o'clock. So you could have four that could be at six o'clock or anytime.
Correct.
We've been having them before. And 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 I think that's fine. I would just suggest if if we can limit the the if we're going to have multiple ones in a month, if we can limit the ones that are actually happening at four, it's just, I think for some of us is kind of harder to do that. And I've kind of, when we know there's a work session, I can block those additional hours, but yeah, so now we have the flexibility where they can be at six or that. So that's, I mean, that's part of.
Yes, that's exactly, that's exactly right. And I I I was considering that. It seems to me that the six o'clock time is probably better for a lot of commissioners. And so what we do have on the schedule that was in your packet is it does say planning commission meetings are typically held at six PM in Lane Auditorium. So that's the default. If there's ever a change, a need to add an additional work session at four, or to hold it in two forty-one, that would be properly announced on our website.
Yeah, I mean, I see the advantage of the four o'clock because it'd allow us to have a regular meeting and a work session. But sometimes those work sessions were kind of rushed.
I just want to, I just need to make sure I'm clear.
Confused it more.
Yeah, I was like, he's going to clear it all up for me. But I'm tired. It's been a long week. You're saying it, we we still should hold the four o'clock on the fourth Tuesday in case we might have one. No, we're we're getting rid of those. They're just at six, but sometimes it's a work session, but the work session could be the the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday. At six.
The work session could ha- is typically going to be held at six o'clock in Lane Auditorium.
Okay.
If there's a work session. However,
There could be no work sessions. There could be two work sessions in a month, whatever.
Or if there happens to be too many items on an agenda, that's when we would say, and and one of them happens to be a work session, then that's when we would say, if this in that case, that specific case, we would hold a work session at four o'clock in two forty-one. And we actually have one of those dates already. I've I've noticed on our calendar that the second meeting in July, we already have two work sessions requested for it and a public hearing. And so on that evening, which would we would post on our website, we would hold a four o'clock work session. If we're going to hold a four o'clock work session, those are always going to be held at the same time it was previously. So the the second, on the second meeting of the
Sounds to me like I need to keep blocking those. I mean, I'm booking my November schedule now. I have, if I don't book it now, it's not going to be there.
Absolutely. And we're we're continuing to reserve that room two forty-one for the second Tuesday of every month at four o'clock in case this happens.
Where we have just so much, okay.
So just to kind of bring it home, it sounds like we, it's in our best interest to hold four o'clock. You can always tell us to release the hold with the hold of four o'clock for the fourth, the second meeting of the month.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
And they usually tell us like a month ahead.
At least a month in advance. Yes, that's correct.
Well, and specifically, if this schedule is approved, the commission would actually have to approve at the prior meeting, the work session to be held at the successive meeting at four o'clock so that they can then be appropriately noticed. So it actually will require action by the commission on a case by case basis to call the next meeting at to start at four o'clock with a work session. I think the main purpose of this, though, is to eliminate the distinction between work session reserved meetings and and public hearing. Because we, as as Mr. McDermott was mentioning, we were finding ourselves kind of lopsided here for a few months. And so just eliminating that distinction and allow any meeting to be held for any purpose, I think, is is better from a scheduling efficiency perspective.
All right. So with that, is there a motion from the floor to adopt the schedule as presented? So moved. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Claiborne?
Aye.
Commissioner Murray?
Aye.
Commissioner Bivens?
Aye.
Commissioner Carazano?
Aye.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes.
Commissioner Missile?
Aye.
And Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And as a formality to this, we will need to pass a resolution to set the Albemarle County planning commission meeting schedule. Typically, in this scenario, the clerk would be the one to attest, if you, I think that's the appropriate word, to attest to the resolution. With our clerk being out on personal leave, it is acceptable for Mr. McDermott as the secretary to certify this resolution. So
Mr. Sheriff, I might add just a little bit of explanation of what this resolution is about. Interestingly, when we were looking into whether or not the schedule needed to be published in the newspaper, the answer is not on its own. Interestingly, there's not a requirement to publish the schedule in the newspaper. What is required, however, is if the commission chooses to continue a matter without advertising it to the next session due to weather or other hazards, this schedule is required to be in the newspaper. So that's the basis for publishing this in the newspaper. Again, not to inform the public of the regular meetings, but to inform the public of the fallback meeting in case any meeting needs to be canceled. It's a bigger issue in the winter, obviously, due to inclement weather, but we've but but we've seen with COVID how we've had to had to postpone meetings due to COVID. So I just wanted to give the the commission a little bit of explanation as to why we needed this separate resolution, not so much for the schedule itself, but for the automatic rescheduling. And Mr. Chair, as you alluded to, this, the resolution that was in your package was prepared in anticipation that Ms. Schaefer would be certifying it on behalf of the commission. If the commission approves this, though, what I'm suggesting is that the commission adopt this resolution with the amendment that Mr. McDermott, as the secretary, be allowed to certify it so that it gets to the newspaper in a timely fashion.
And thank you for that additional context. I apologize for not stopping at you first. So with that context, is there a motion to adopt a resolution as modified as suggesting Mr. McDermott as secretary, you want to certify it?
A move.
So, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, maybe have a roll call?
Commissioner Claiborne?
Aye.
Commissioner Murray?
Aye.
Commissioner Bivens?
Yes.
Commissioner Carazano?
Aye.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Yep.
Commissioner Missile?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Right, motion passes unanimously. Any old or items for, any old business or items for follow up?
Chair, chair, I would just sort of, I I give three recommendations here for presentations that I think would be helpful for us to hear, but I also would be helpful to have in the record. Now, I'm always about building records here. So I think it would be helpful for us to hear something from the Ravanna Water Sewage Authority about what their plans are for supplying water to this community in the future. I think that would be helpful for us to have heard, as I'm sure people believe, we don't have enough. But we have enough.
There are an update on what they're doing.
Yeah.
There's stuff going on.
There's stuff going on that I think that would be helpful for us to know. That also I think would be helpful to be in the record. I think it would also be helpful to hear, to have a presentation from the Office of Performance and and Strategy. I think that would be something that we would would bit from. And then also, and this is a little bit of an interesting one, I think it would be helpful to hear something from our assessors. Because I, there there was a couple of statements made this evening that were blended with perhaps not full information.
Was blended with what?
Not full information.
Oh, I got you.
And so I think it would be also helpful to have an assessor speak to us, but also give it the ability to be in the record. And those would be the three things that Chair, I'd ask you if you'd speak to Mr. McDermott at your leisure about the possibility of including those as 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 potential presentations to this body.
Right. So by that notice, I'll ask Mr. McDermott to to dock those for some of our internal meetings and we'll be able to report back. So maybe it goes under items or follow up for the next meeting or next couple of meetings or so. So.
One quick new business.
Yep.
I I neglected to mention to our counselor, in the historic preservation committee, there was we had a circular conversation on what is a committee and when do we have to, what's a subcommittee and public notice. And I recall that when I was originally on that committee, I think four years ago, you sent us a memo. Can you send that again? We have new membership and even the staff said they were slightly confused. Probably my fault.
I seem to recall giving a presentation to the historic preservation committee a few years ago. I'd be happy to reforward the presentation.
Forward it to the current committee, and then we don't have to ask you for another memo.
I'd be happy to forward it to you personally, and then you're welcome to forward on.
I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Any other old business or items for follow up?
Can Commissioner Claiborne, if you don't mind, I I noticed that I did not have my typical AC forty-four update on this agenda. I apologize for that with Carolyn out, and we're thrown into a, you know, a tizzy here and and sometimes we miss things. But so I just, if you don't mind, I would love to just quickly mention that with AC forty-four, if you haven't seen the announcement, we are beginning a series of open houses out in the community. And they will, the first one is tomorrow evening at Journey Elementary or Journey Middle School, sorry. Up in up in Commissioner Bivens jurisdiction. And then there's one, there's one, once a week for the next following weeks. And you can find, they're they're all spread throughout the the county. They're actually all being held at different schools around the county, some in the rural area, some in the development area. And so encourage commissioners to stop in at the one closest to their district and see how things are going. We're going to be presenting a lot of the things and hear from the public on a lot of things that we presented to you all at the previous work session. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of those. And you can find them on the AC forty-four website.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions before we bring this to a close or comments? All right, we're hearing none. I want to ask for a motion to adjourn until eight o'clock on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. What'd I say? Oh, goodness.
June thirteenth.
Reading too fast.
Starting and ending the meeting all at once.
Adjourn until six o'clock. Excuse me, Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All the favorites say aye.
Aye.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.